Good evening. I would like to call October 9, 2017, Bellocity Council Meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. McGill?
Here.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Here.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schweller?
Here.
Mayor Baird?
Here.
Formal approval of City Council Work Session Minutes and Regular Meeting Minutes of September 25, 2017. Does any member on council have any corrections or additions to the regular City Council Meeting Minutes of our last meeting?
No, no mayor.
Seeing none, the minutes are approved as written. Mayor's announcements. We have one proclamation, and this proclamation is for National Domestic Violence Awareness Month as of October 2017. I know there's been a number of fundraisers going on. I know Artemis is having a big event downtown this month, and I think it brings up a very valid point that all the residents should be aware of domestic violence. So I'm going to read this proclamation. National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2017, whereas all citizens of Green County have a right to live in their homes free from violence or fear of violence, and whereas the problem of domestic violence requires collective community response to ensure safety for victims, accountability for batterers, and safe futures for children, and whereas the reduction of domestic violence in Green County improves the quality of life for all of our families and individuals. And now therefore, I, Robert Al Baird, as Mayor of the City of Belloc, in recognition of the preservnant work done by the Green County Consortium of Domestic Violence, which consists of more than eighty-five representatives from the Green County Law Enforcement, Criminal Justice, Medical Human Services, Victim Advocacy, can't speak this evening, batterer intervention, and other groups, do hereby proclaim October 2017 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urges all citizens to actively participate in activities sponsored by the Green County Consortium on the Domestic Violence and Family Violence Prevention Center of Green County, which encourages all Green County residents to work toward the elimination of interpersonal violence. So I think it's very important. I know some of the members on council have been involved with this. I don't know if they want to add anything?
I have my pen on, my purple pen.
And I know we had a fundraiser for the, what's the, Women's Protective?
The Family Violence Prevention Center.
Yeah, yeah.
Prevention Center.
Center.
Yeah, that was in...
And that was a great event.
Yeah.
What was that?
May.
May. So it's very important. Green County does do a good job on this. They do have a lot of good services, and I want to thank them also. And it's one of those things that all the police departments of the county and the sheriff's department are involved with.
I would like to add that the Family Violence Prevention Center is recognized as one of the best-run organizations of its kind in the country. They have just a phenomenal staff that does remarkable work with what they have to work with, and it's...
It's a very neat facility. It's very secure. It's locked up. They, I think typically have police there. I know police go in and out there a lot.
They work with the police so much.
Very much so. So it's a really neat facility. The only other item I had this evening is I had the opportunity to talk to some third grade classes. I know Mrs. Sargent was one of the teachers, and then all the students, or a lot of the students, sent a number of thank yous. And it's, they're all very interesting, as you can imagine, from a third grader. I'm just going to read one or two. Dear Mayor Baird, thank you for coming to our classroom. I have learned a lot from you. I hope you come to our classroom again, and you are a great mayor. Let's see. Dear Mayor, I love, let's see. That was pretty much the same. They always remember a couple things. I learned a lot from you. I think it's funny, you have a huge dog and a little dog. I think it is interesting that you do not have an office.
(laughing).
So they are quite entertaining kids. It is very enjoyable to do, and they always ask the same questions every year. When they start running out of questions, it's always going to be, what's your favorite color? Do you have dogs? And what's your favorite food? So, thank you, Mrs. Sargent's class. I know they also, Mark, got to come in, was it this week?
They came in last week.
Last week?
Yes.
And toured the facilities, and I'm sure got to meet the police chief and some other things.
The service department, and, yes.
So it's nice to see that you can do that in a small town. That's all I have for Mayor's announcements. We have no public hearings of ordinances this evening, no introductions of ordinances this evening. We do have one resolution, Resolution 2017-CC. Mr. Schweller?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 2017-CC, a resolution establishing a blanket purchase order limit as required by Ohio Revised Code, Section 5705.41, parentheses, capital D, parentheses, three. Whereas Ohio Revised Code 5705.41, parentheses, capital D, parentheses, three, allows political subdivisions to use blanket purchase orders for the payment of lawfully appropriated goods and services of the subdivision in place of regular purchase orders, and whereas only one blanket purchase order may be outstanding per appropriation line item, and the amount of the blanket purchase order may not exceed the amount that has been established by a majority of council, and whereas the City of Belloc currently has not established a maximum amount allowable for blanket purchase orders, whereas city staff recommend a blanket purchase order amount limit not to exceed $25,000 unless a purchase for a higher amount has been approved by city council. Now therefore, the City of Belloc hereby resolves that Section 1, council hereby establishes a blanket purchase order limit not to exceed $25,000 unless a purchase order for a higher amount has been approved by city council in accordance with Ohio Revised Code, Section 5705.41, parentheses, capital D, parentheses, three. Section 2, the city manager slash finance director is hereby authorized, empowered, and directed to take all action necessary to effect such amendment and appropriations and evidence same on the books and financial records of the city. Section 3, this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith. And, Mark, this is a recommendation that came out of our audit?
Yes, although our audit is not completely finalized yet, one of the recommendations was to establish a blanket purchase order limit. So just to give you a little bit more detail, within the charter, there is a limit that says anything that is less than $50,000 does not have to go out for competitive bid. So if it's greater than $50,000, we have to have a competitive bid. So anything less than $50,000, we're required to issue a purchase order before purchasing it. Ninety, ninety-five percent of the time, that purchase order is very specific. We are ordering water meters from Badger Water Meter. We're ordering a hundred of them of one-inch meters at this size. We know exactly what it is. That's what we're ordering. A blanket purchase order is more for the times when it's like, we have blanket purchase order lows that says the service department is doing a project at the museum. They don't know what they're going to get into. They're not, they don't know what they're going to need. They can go up to Lowe's and they can buy whatever supplies they need at that time to do it. They're still required to get receipts, turn in receipts. We verify everything that they're purchasing, but they just don't know. It would take too much time for them to go up there with a specific list, get a purchase order approved, then go up to Lowe's and buy it, and then find out that something's not there, or whatever. So that's where we do that for Lowe's. We do it for advanced auto parts with our vehicle maintenance, for a couple different things like that. The auditor, based on this Ohio Revised Code section, has said council needs to establish one-time the limit. $25,000 is an artificial number. It was really put in place to satisfy the requirement of the auditor's state. We're not going to authorize a blanket purchase order to Lowe's for $25,000, but at some time, there may be something we're going to purchase that makes sense to have that, and rather than having to come back to council and amend that, we're going to do this one time, put it in place, and not have to think about it again. It's not really going to change anything that we do already, but it's going to check the box for the auditor's office and remove one thing from our list that they like to create out for us on an annual basis.
Any questions on council?
I think you're still working on the budget, so it doesn't really authorize any more money to spend. So, I mean, when you read this, you could, there's a lot of questions that come in your mind, like people going around, right, $25,000, but, you know, it's a requirement.
Right. They're still, anyone who buys anything with the city is required to have a purchase order. All purchase orders are approved by me before they're entered. I would not approve a blanket purchase order for, to Lowe's for $20,000. It wouldn't happen. If it's that much of a project, they're going to have to know exactly what they're trying to get, and it'll be a specific purchase order for that project. So it doesn't modify that, and everything is controlled by the budget. It says if you, you have to have that money appropriated before you can spend it.
Yeah, I just want to fully understand that, you know. It can be vague. I mean, it depends.
So what, if it's already, it has to be in the budget, what is the purpose of this other than to satisfy an auditor?
That's the only reason that it's there, is because we have the controls in place already, but the section of the Ohio Revised Code says that it needed to have council approval. And you're going to see here in a minute, there's a couple other items that are going to be, that we've never had actual council approval of, that we're going to start having because...
To put in the minutes.
To put in the minutes. That's exactly what it is. To have a formal record of that this was discussed. So it doesn't, none of the things that we're looking at changes anything that we're doing, but it, well, now formalize it.
Yep.
If you do have to order a hundred new water meters or whatever, and it exceeds this 25, does that mean that you have to come before council and say, I want to have a blanket order?
That would order, that'd be order of his own purchase order.
If it had his own purchase order, no. If it was a specific, if it wasn't a blanket, if it wasn't that said, I'm going to have an open purchase order, and I don't know how many water meters I need, then I couldn't exceed $25,000 with that. I wouldn't operate that way. Really, the $50,000 is the limit that says, that's when I've got to come back to you.
Come to council, okay.
As I mentioned to Mr. Greenwood before the meeting, there's times that I'll bring items before council that I don't technically have to. The purchase of a police cruiser is less than $50,000, but capital items, things like that, I'll bring just because I think it's in the best interest of everyone to be aware of when those purchases are being made.
And they're already line items in the budget?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we've already approved the expenditure.
Yeah, we've approved the budget.
So by the line item of all the budgets, so.
Our controls are probably a little bit better than what a lot of cities have right now, and the state uses a one-size-fits-all from the standpoint of audit. We're going to talk about two more issues tonight in the same vein, and even the auditors, when you question them, what is the amount, what should it be? We could have made it $500,000. We could have made it $100,000, and the action would be taken. It would come off the list. It's not something we need to worry about, but at least we used something reasonable, although I don't think we need these controls, but I think we're better controlled in, you know, before we even did something like this as far as...
It's just they want a purchase order, and a blanket will cover those ancillary items, whereas everything else is going to be done under a regular purchase order.
Right, right.
Imagine they came up with that. Maybe at some point, there was a lot of unscrupulous spending going on.
Or loose records.
There are examples of places that, that's why all these laws came into place.
In other cities.
Right, in other cities that have that, but, yes, we've never had any experience with that here.
And how long has that section of the Ohio Revised Code been in there the way it is, and we've been audited every year, and they never said anything?
Probably many years.
Okay. Any other questions on city council? May I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2017-CC?
May I make the move to adopt Resolution 2017-CC?
May I have a second? I'll second. And roll call.
Motion by Mr. Schweller to adopt Resolution 2017-CC, a resolution establishing a blanket purchase order limit as required by Ohio Revised Code, Section 5705.41, parentheses, capital D, parentheses, three, seconded by Mrs. Seager-Lawson. Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, that's all the resolutions. City managers report.
Yes, a few items this evening. First, the fire department open house is tomorrow night from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. That is always a great event. They put a lot of time and effort in preparing for that, so we'd invite everyone out to Fire Station 2 tomorrow night at 6:00 o'clock to attend the open house. Also, Wednesday, October 18th, is our next planning board meeting. That meeting, we will continue the discussion of the comprehensive plan. There's a couple other items of business that will likely be on there, too, but Wednesday, October 18th at 6:00 p.m., the planning board will meet here in council chambers. The levy information meeting, we had a informational meeting last Tuesday evening. We, attendance was sparse. We had Mr. Ralph Harper and his wife attended, who are helping with the levy committee, and a gentleman from Channel 7 with his camera was here, so I guess that's, I'll take that as a good sign that there's not a lot of questions out there. People, it was a beautiful evening that night, so that's probably the other reason. But we are holding another one this Wednesday afternoon from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. here in council chambers. As part of that, and I'm going to go through some of the information that I would have presented if anyone had been here. Some of this council has already seen, but again, I'm just trying to get this information out there. It's, most of it is on our website. There is a mailer, informational mailer, that's going out to residents starting today, so they'll start getting that in their mailboxes probably this week. So I just want to go through this again with you. So it is a three-mill additional, this is a general fund levy, three-mill, five-year property tax levy, but it's, we're specifically going to use it for public safety purposes. As council knows, the reason that we chose not to have it specific is we both needed for both police and fire, so by having it as a general fund, that gives us the flexibility, and we don't have competing issues on the ballot. It will generate about $500,000 a year. The one thing, everyone within the last week or so has received their notification from the county auditor about what their new value is, so actually, if this is approved, it will be less than three mils, because if your value went up, we are only going to generate $500,000. So the values in the community went up nine percent, this rate will actually be roughly nine percent lower than three mils already, because it's only going to generate what was certified. So even as it, the first time you pay your taxes, it's going to be slightly less. It's not enough to really make that much of a difference, but it is going to be less. And the thing that I want to make clear to everyone, even though people's property taxes went up nine percent, our revenue does not go up nine percent. Our revenue actually stays the same, roughly the same, because the property tax rates are actually lowered, and the property values go up, and we get the same amount of money. So it's very confusing, very few people completely understand it. In fact, I had to call the county auditor to make sure that I understood what, exactly how this was going to work. So although it'll generate $500,000, it'll cost $8.75 per month for each $100,000 in valuation. Probably in reality, it'll be slightly less than that, and when I say slightly, probably pennies less than that per month, but it will be less than that, won't be more than that, to generate that with the new property values. What are the purposes of the levy? Number one, it's to reduce the structural deficit. The state has made significant cuts to local government funding over the past seven, eight years, to the tune of its affecting us over a quarter of a million dollars per year. If it weren't for those cuts by the state, we would not have a levy on the ballot. We would not have a need for that levy on the ballot, but it is, and that's what it is. The other thing that has an impact with the declining interest rates and the limited investments that the city can invest in, there were, we've, on average, $137,000 less per year in 2017 than what was in 2007. So that's pretty significant. There were, and I think 2007, we earned like $170,000 in interest, and one of the recent years, it was less than $10,000. So that had a significant impact, too, but there's nothing really we can do about that. So on average, our structural deficit averages about $300,000 a year. Well, that's what we're spending, more than we're taking in on any given year, and that's what a portion of this levy is needed for. In addition to that, it's, we need to add a full-time firefighter. We're having a difficult time hiring and maintaining part-time fire employees to fill those shifts. Right now, we have one full-time firefighter on each shift. With the addition of hiring a new one and shifting some other schedules around, we'll have two full-time firefighters on each shift, still supplemented with part-time, but that will allow us to have those two full-time firefighters on each shift. So the cost of all that put together is about $130,000 per year. We'll add one full-time police officer. Primarily, this is needed so that we can have a full-time school resource officer. This new officer probably won't be that school resource officer, but it allows somebody from our current staff to become that school resource officer for those nine months out of the year that school is going on, and then in the, in the summer months, they'll be able to offset some, that's our busier time for vacations and things like that, so they can offset some of our overtime that we're using now for that. The school is also committed to paying for a portion of the school resource officer, so we're expecting some revenue for that, but the estimated cost for that is about $85,000 per year. And then the final purpose is to earmark specific funds for improvements to the downtown. $25,000 is the number to begin with. Depending on other projects going on, that number could increase or decrease, but we wanted to have specific money that we can do sidewalk improvements, street scape improvements, maybe do some lighting over a period of time, things of that nature, to just improve the look of downtown. So that, that money will also be included if this levy passes. Just some other things to consider with this levy. Belloc does not have a municipal income tax, so if you don't work in another community that has a tax, you're saving anywhere from one and a half to two and a half percent of your income, because Belloc does not have that. And a lot of people don't understand that if you're paying that to the City of Kettering or the City of Dayton, Belloc does not get any of that money back. It does not come to us. There's no revenue sharing or anything like that. That money stays in the community where you're working, not where you're living, so we do not have any benefit from municipal income tax. Our water rates have not been raised since 2011. Very proud of that fact that we've been able to maintain that, and we haven't needed that money, and so we're not going to ask for it if we don't need it. And then along those same lines, our waste collection rates have actually been reduced. There was a period of time that rates were rising. We did, we've now done two separate contracts with a joint contract with other communities, and I was looking at some preliminary projections. We'll be able to keep that $13 per month at least for another three or four years, even though we're actually paying a little bit more to the, for, under the current contract, we'll be able to use our existing balance and not have to raise that probably for at least three more years. So we're saving people almost $50 a year from what they had been paying just a few years ago, and I think if you looked at just about any other community around, you're going to pay more than $13 a month for trash collection. So that is something that we've done to keep the cost down for our residents. Right now, our residents pay, for each $100,000, they pay $561 per year to the city for property taxes. I understand their, their property tax bill is higher than that, but that's what we get. That provides our police, our fire, our zoning, property maintenance, our actual street improvements that come through, stormwater improvements, the museum, all that. Our rates have not been changed since 2011, so it's been six-plus years since they've been changed, and at that point, it was just a replacement levy that changed them. The last time we had a new property tax levy approved was 2009. That was for the fire department in 2009. So it's been over eight years since we've had any new levies approved. And one other thing that council took the action several years ago to consolidate our police and fire dispatch with Sugar Creek Township and the City of Xenia and Green County, that saves us very conservatively, I'd say, $125,000 per year. If we still had that dispatch center today, we'd have to have two full-time employees in there, and the technology part of it would be well. So that $125,000 is probably very conservative, but that's the number we used at the time. That was our estimate at that time, and I think it's probably more than that, but we did do what we could to save some money for the residents. What are we trying to accomplish with this? We want to keep the, our safety services, I think are second to none. I think the services we provide by both police and fire, the responsiveness we have to residents, residents have come to expect it, and we want to maintain that. We want to continue to provide that excellent service that we have. To do that, we need to invest in equipment and personnel. We need to have those people and that equipment available so that when that call comes in, we're able to respond. We just want to maintain the quality of life for the residents. Like I said, they've come to expect it. In some ways, I think we've done a good job of spoiling them over the years. We do a lot of things that, I get comments that the service department, they go above and beyond to help somebody with a stormwater issue, and they'll do things that I can guarantee you other cities wouldn't even begin to do if there's an issue, to help residents solve their issues. I think the nine percent increase in our, in our property values that the city is seeing, that's, it works both ways, but I think that's, that's what we're trying to do. That is good. People don't like that when they have to pay their taxes, but when they go to sell their house, they certainly like that, and they want to see those property values increase, and they want to see that. And I, I think everyone here has an example of somebody who's sold their house probably for at least what they're asking for, if not more, and sold it pretty quickly if they, if they want to do that. And then the downtown area, we did the walkability workshop, and I think we saw that there is a lot of interest in the downtown area, and just in the last sixty days, there's been a lot of things going on, people making improvements to buildings, and the city wants to be part of that, too, and do what we can to improve the look and the appearance of downtown Belloc. So those are the main points that I had. There was some other information that I've sort of hit on there, but this is a sheet that council saw back when they made this decision, but it's really in this area here. This is the structural deficit that I was talking about, that we're spending more than we're taking in just to provide the level of service that we are. And with, with the levy, we will continue to take in more, but these numbers are considerably lower than they were before, and it will stretch it out over a much longer period of time. This one provides, we generate right now just over $3 million in property tax revenue, and this would add an additional $500,000 in property tax revenue. And the effective rate is really what's, this is what, these rates here, although we have 19.5 mils of voted millage, these effective rates are what the residents actually pay, and these will continue to go down as the property values go up, so we will end up generating the same amount of money. The city, the total valuation within the city is about $170 million. That was for last year. That'll go up by about that eight or nine percent for next year, which is a good thing that property values are rising. But you can see, over, over the course of time, we are still going to probably be less than we were back in the peak in 2010, 11, right when the recession hit, where the property values actually dropped at that point. And then finally, our portion of the property tax dollar is, right now, it's about 22 percent. Obviously, that will go up if this passes. The schools get the majority of that at 55 percent, but the county and the health district are at 17 percent also. So for a $100,000 home, you're going to pay 2,500 in taxes. Only 562 of that goes to the City of Belloc. The rest of it goes to the schools, the county, different places like that, the libraries, the park district are the other ones that get that money. So that is my summary of the levy. There is that informational meeting on Wednesday if anyone has questions, or feel free to give me a call. I'd be happy to answer any of those questions if they have them. And then finally, the last thing I had for council was our budget schedule. It is that time of year to begin talking about the budget. So prior to our next meeting on October 23rd, we'll have a work session. At that point, I'm going to change it up from what we've done the last couple years. We're going to have the service department and the admin budget to go before council. Historically, I've had police and fire first. Didn't make much sense until this levy vote happens to have it and have a bunch of what-ifs, if it passes, if it, if it doesn't pass. So on 10/23, we'll have service and admin. On November 13th, will be the police and fire departments, and then on November 27th, we'll have the five-year, sort of bring it all together with the five-year projection, and some of these sheets that I just showed you here will be summarized in that meeting, and at that night will be when we plan to introduce the appropriations for 2018. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on council? Seeing none, we'll move on to committee reports. Service?
News and Public Report, John.
Safety?
I just mentioned what Mark's already mentioned, tomorrow night, fire department open house, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. I think the weather's going to be good, and it's always a great thing to attend. You can see what the fire department does and get a taste of what they do, and it's amazing. And as we can see, just simple things like they teach CPR, some of those things have come to light and benefited people. So there's a lot of things that maybe we don't see or know. Because of their work, people, lives are better and maybe even save their lives, so it's just a great time to go see what they do.
All right. Thank you very much, Forrest. Thank you very much, Forrest. Mr. Schweller, I think you have a couple things for us this evening.
Yeah, we do, Mayor. In everybody's packets this week, we actually got the financial update, which is our third quarter analysis, and it looks like our revenue is up about 12% due primarily to the homestead rollback increase, and also we're doing some, a lot of tap-in revenue. So we're up about 12% on the revenue side. Unfortunately, we're also up about 6% on the expenditure side. And again, I think our biggest change is, is the capital, and the capital doesn't necessarily hit per annum, so it kind of hits one quarter different than other quarter. But again, in the capital amounts, it's something that we have budgeted and something we track pretty close, although it does show up as kind of anomaly as you look at the expenditures month over month. The tap-in fees have been $75,000 in the landings and also $82,000 in White Oaks Landings. That's been some good revenue for us and a lot of activity, and as I understand, we've got a number of housing units still on track, so we should continue to grow that number a little bit. Last page is our capital projects, and the interesting part about this is when you look through it, it looks like there's a lot of things that have been either spent less than the budgeted amount, and also there's quite a few things that we continue to defer. And I think I speak for the city manager and for our staff that if we have something that doesn't need to be replaced, even though it's in the budget for replacement, we continue to stretch it out, its useful lives a little bit. And as we talk about the asset management policy later on, one of the things, the state auditors came in and said that if we're keeping a vehicle for 10 years instead of seven years, we should go ahead and make sure we depreciate over the 10 years, but it just shows that there's been enough of those deferrals that have gone on whereby we extend something beyond its normal useful life that the auditors felt they need to make a comment about, but I think that speaks to good stewardship of our assets.
So we need, that it might?
Yeah, a little bad, any other comments anybody wants to make on any questions, Mark and I can certainly respond.
Do we need to make a motion to acknowledge?
Yeah, they want us to have, yeah, we need to have a quorum acknowledgement of the quarterly financials in the minutes. This is, again, another one of the one-size-fits-all, even though we talk about this every meeting, it's not documented formally in our, in our minutes as far as by a motion to accept. So I guess at the end, I would move that we would accept the third quarter unaudited financial report for 2017.
May I have a second, then? I'll second, and roll call.
Motion by Mr. Schweller to accept the third quarter 2017 unaudited financial report, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes.
The second item here for tonight, Mayor, is the asset management policy. And again, this is something that came out in the audit conversation. I don't think it's something that's tremendously relevant to us, but the auditors brought it up, and again, it's along the one-size-fits-all agenda. But it basically is made up of two parts. One is capital assets, and the other is controlled capital-type assets. And for our capital assets, what we've done is we've elected a threshold of $5,000 such that if something costs less than $5,000, it's not going to be capitalized. And then Mark has also established useful lives based on estimates. It ranges from probably a low of five years to vehicles, machinery, equipment, and high of 75 years to utility structures and service and buildings and improvements. And again, this is along the lines of the auditor mentioned, that if we have assets that last longer than the projected useful life, we should use a different useful life on the asset as we go forward capitalizing, which I don't really agree with that, but the state wants to see us be doing. And again, a lot of times, we have something that stretches out beyond its useful life that's because we've been able to extend its service or maybe modify it or make some minor repairs to it, so I think that's just safeguarding assets and doing the right thing. The second part of the asset management policy is controlled capital-type assets, and this just says the custodial department shall maintain inventory records for assets that have initial useful lives extending beyond one year and a cost greater than $500. And generally, we're going to tag the assets and have them identified by number. We'll keep a database of all the assets, and again, this is things with useful life greater than one year so that it's not really just a consumable supply, and also something with a cost greater than $500. I think we have a lot of this already in place. I don't think this is going to require a tremendous amount of work by staff, but again, they wanted us to adopt a asset management policy and have something in writing. Anything else, Mark?
And actually, this policy, with the exception of the inclusion of the useful lives, was originally drafted in 2014, and it was put in place by staff. They want council to approve it, so that's why it's going in place now. So nothing has changed. The useful lives are exactly what shows up in our financial statements. Everything else on this policy has been in place since 2014. Nothing has changed. We've been doing these lists of the controlled type assets. We've been capitalizing, we've done all that.
Okay.
So this, again, is just for the record. It'll be adopted, and we can forward it to the auditors.
Mr. Schweller, would you mind like to make a motion?
I'd like to move that we adopt the asset management policy as submitted and read in part tonight.
May I have a second?
Second.
And roll call.
Motion by Mr. Schweller to adopt the asset manage, the asset management policy, seconded by Mr. McGill. Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Anything else?
That's all for tonight.
All right. Community affairs?
Only to remind people Halloween in the park is coming up, and it's October 21st.
Yes.
Three to five.
I believe that's correct.
And I guess we should reiterate while we're on the topic that Halloween is October 31st.
Or repeat that next meeting.
Yes. I know we got a couple, another meeting, so.
Yep.
Anything else?
That's it.
That's it.
Any old business to come before council? Any new business? Open discussion.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Forrest? On down the road.
I was just going to report that I attended the Green County Regional Planning Meeting on September 26th, and there were a few things that were talked about. One of them is, Green County is going to try to do a coordination of a GIS system, and so they're going to invite us and other communities in Green County to use the same system. GIS system, I can't remember what it stands for. Geospatial?
Geographic Information System.
Information System. So that we can track things and be able to coordinate things with Green County. So they're going to reach out to us when they try to have that meeting. I'm not sure when it is yet. They didn't know it at that time when it was going to be.
And we're in the process of putting our own in place right now, because it's, you know, we're doing that. We'll coordinate with them. We get a lot of data from them already.
Okay.
But we're putting one in place for our water, primarily for the water system.
Water system.
But then also for streets and stormwater, things of that nature, too.
Okay. They also invited all members of council to a meeting on October 17th at 6:00 PM, and I think that was chaired among the council members. And that's for, it's called the Thoroughfare Project, to try and help make sure that we are all planning and coordinating our thoroughfares throughout the county. And the other thing that came up was, there was a discussion about the flooding in Houston and what would happen, and they specifically were targeting Belbrook just because, I think, probably of our location and where we are in relation to the rivers and streams and things like that. But the question came up about, you know, what would happen if there was a major storm like there was in Houston and Belbrook, and do we have an emergency evacuation plan? And have we thought of where, like, the, where the shelters would be and things like that? And I thought we probably have. I just wasn't sure if we, if we've talked about it, or maybe if, if we can, like, put it on paper?
And it is on paper, not necessarily specific for Belbrook, for Green County. The Green County EMA, that's really what they do, and that's what we, we're a member of that, and that's what we pay for them. They have an emergency manager, that that's, her sole focus is to develop the plans for the county, and there are all kinds of things that list the places that people can shelter. Obviously, the, a flood is something that is maybe more prominent here, but tornadoes is what's always been the driver. So what happens if places are destroyed and, and they need to shelter? So, you know, is it the high schools? Is it, you know, depending on the path of where is flooded, where can, where can they go?
Okay.
So yes, there is a plan in place.
Okay. Just maybe, I mean, you don't have dealt by next time or something, but if you could maybe share it with us, just so we have an idea about kind of what, what the plan is. I mean, are there certain places in Belbrook where we would tell people to go to? Or, I was just thinking, you know, okay, I live up on the hill, so I'm not too worried about, you know, floods, but if I, if I was, where would I go?
And so much of it is incident-specific.
Yeah, yeah.
If it's a flood that, and even with, with the hurricane there, they had a fair amount of time to, they didn't know where, but they knew to get people to evacuate and that. Whereas a tornado, no warning, no anything.
So you don't know where it's going to be.
Completely different.
Right.
And where it's going to be and what you're going to have access to, and you can't rely on it.
So I would say with the exception of, obviously, the downtown area is in the flood plain or
very close to it, that would probably be the most susceptible place, and then getting people to, whether it's the high school or the middle school, or places that are on
the hill.
Higher ground. But with the amount of rain that they got, it didn't really matter if you were on, how higher ground you were on, there was just, there was a lot of water.
Right.
So some of it's contingent, but I can, I can get some of that information and, at least in a general, in a general way, what, what the plan is.
Yeah. Okay.
I went, when I was over Green County courthouse, they got, down at the bottom courthouse, they got a situation room.
Yes.
With everything in place and people, in case there's emergencies. It's, it's a pretty good setup, and all that stuff's planned and should be in place. But specific for here, I'm not sure.
Yeah. I just thought it'd be helpful for all of us to kind of have an idea about, okay, where's the first designated place where we're supposed to send people?
Right. And yes, the EMA is down at the bottom of the courthouse, and they have a situation room, and there's actually an advisory board that I serve on that we meet on a quarterly basis and talk about the needs of the EMA, and they do a lot of the grant, they do a lot of the tabletop exercises where they, they plan for these things, that type of things. So that's, we are involved in that as much as we can be.
And that's one of the things that some of the groups bring up, the fact that, they call it rain bombs, that just inundate maybe a small area or a big area with, you know, unprecedented amounts of rain in a short period of time, and, you know, we're susceptible to that anywhere. And I guess hopefully the weatherman would tell us beforehand.
I know in Cincinnati, just a couple of years ago, they had one of those that, I mean, it flooded the streets, just in a very relatively small area, but it completely inundated them, and then, you know, it went away almost as quickly as it came, but for that period of time, it was, it was pretty intense.
I think infrastructure-wise, our water plant, I mean, it's possible because of the levies back there. If it was something extreme, I guess it could knock it out. I don't know if there's a contingency to shut some valves and bring water from somewhere else if it was that bad.
We have access, we have crossover points with Green County.
That's what I thought.
So that if, if we needed to, we can share water with them, and in fact, one of them, even though it's with Green County, it's actually from the Montgomery County system over in the area of Clyo Road, that we can, we can get water from them, too, in a, in a very unique situation like that, so.
Because working with, you know, we have the maps and the water mains, and it's all tied together.
Right.
So there's a way of, and if something like that, that water plant probably be up pretty quick anyway.
Yeah.
You know, so that was the only thing. This building here, it might get your generator, maybe.
Yeah. Yeah.
The only other thing that I was going to ask about was, you know, we did the banners that have the, you know, city of Belbrook on, but it's, it's almost Christmas time and things like that, when I know we were talking about doing, doing like seasonal banners, and I just was wondering what.